At this time, I'll call the March 4th, 2021 meeting to order for the Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one item to add to the agenda, and that is to consider the purchase of a 2021 Chevy van from Home Automotive, and this would be for the jail. And with that one addition to the agenda, I'd move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
Have the motion in the second. A question or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the February 25th meeting. It also includes the payroll of $334,992.46. Also, the wire payment for utilities of $9,816.21.
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to commission comments.
Ron, I'll be going down to Pottawatomie County next week for the detention center meeting. And then each quarter, they go to a different location. So that's what will be this next, next meeting. So that's all I have.
Okay. Craig?
Yes, this week I received a couple, well, more than one phone call from Americh Enterprises regards to the Detroit Sheriff's System, some issues that City of Enterprise is having with that. And then that's Gary Hall from Noble Township contacting me earlier this week about issue with the 2650 Avenue between Rain Road and Red Road, Captain Creek feeding into the right of way. That's all I have.
Okay. The one call that I did get had to do with at the train crossing, they had waited almost 30 minutes down there by the Eisenhower Library and the Catholic Church. Raised the issue that what if there was a medical emergency? What if, you know, our train's allowed to block the intersection that long? I know that's something that the city has dealt with, Abilene has. I don't know if we can send a letter of concern if that ever... I'd like to think that could make some difference or somehow raise the issue with the railroads that... And of course, what this person was mentioning is they had come to do some things and then got blocked by the train. And, you know, it was pretty frustrating because they, they just felt like that it was unnecessary. And plus, there were so many trucks and other vehicles that were backed up. And I, I guess it was one of those times that you couldn't get on one of the other roads and go down a few blocks and get across. It was kind of evidently sealed off completely. So I don't know if, Brad, is that something that you could talk to Marcus Rothschild about? And maybe see if the, if they share that concern too? Maybe both of county and city could send a letter? And I know this comes up every once in a while. You know, it happens other times of the day. This happened to be late afternoon, early evening, I guess. But, but anyway, I don't know. Any thoughts anyone else has on that?
I can tell you that we get calls periodically about that issue. I don't know that there's anything we can do that will affect the outcome. I don't know whether, is there still an ordinance, Doug, that has a 10-minute limit?
But it's changed. It used to be 10 minutes, and now that's, the railroad has pointed out, that's not the criteria anymore.
Okay. So I will tell you that we do have a process. If there's a fire or emergency call or medical call, we need to get it opened. We do have a direct, it's actually a speed dial number at dispatch they have on the screen to the dispatcher in Omaha. And they, they connect directly to the person that talks to that conductor, that train master, and they can tell them to open, break the train. And it only takes a few seconds if it's an emergency to get that broke. So we have never, in my recollection, and I don't know that John, he can correct me if he knows of anything, never had a problem getting one broke if it was an emergency. So, so I'm not, I don't have a concern in that way. I have the same concerns as a citizen, and I think you might remember a year or two ago, I sat over by RHB for an hour and I, after lunch, and I stayed there just to see how long it would be that way. And I waited one hour before they finally got, but I broke and let traffic through. And otherwise, I would have went around somewhere else, but I was just curious to see how long it would take. So there are times where it takes a long time, so.
You're curious or stubborn?
I was stubborn.
Well, and, and, you know, in this instance, I think they kind of thought if they would have just headed over to Slina and come back, they could have done their business.
Probably, yeah.
Quicker, because they live southwest, but uptown.
Yeah, I can certainly talk to Marcus. I don't know, you know, in reality, that's going to do a lot of good if we send him some. They do, they do their business, and it didn't seem that the, the road traffic didn't seem to be a priority to them, so.
And I'm sure, you know, some of it has to do the time of year, and some of it's ag-related. And I mean, there's other issues and, and, but, but anyway, that was the one call I got. I did, I did receive some others, y'all mentioned, and the mission did in regards to the mask order and the health order. And so we have some of those things on the agenda today. We do not have any petitions or proclamations, so this would be the time that we do go to public comment. And on the public comments, you know, once again, you'd need to give your name, your address, and let us know if you'd want to speak. And it should be in regards to issues and the nature of personal attacks. But if there are any comments, please let us know, and we would recognize... I have here Lori Megan Armstrong said that she would like to speak, so if you'd please go ahead.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. This is Lori Megan Armstrong, 1173 Old Forty Abilene. First, I'd like to say it's refreshing to see the modified school quarantine finally be implemented in our schools. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We know there's a learning gap widening from the summer long break and the sporadic quarantine of our students. So thank you for giving our kids the opportunity to stay in class, especially when they've been trying so hard to follow all these new rules this year brought. So I really cannot thank you enough for making that step forward. It's been needed for a long time. For, before I launch into a different aspect, I wanted to clarify, Mr. Holtren said that we're at 1.9% positivity. Is, did I hear that correctly?
That's just looking at the last five days.
Last five days, okay. That was a little bit lower than what I'd seen elsewhere, so I just want to clarify that. And then the other aspect I wanted to clarify was that you said that based on vaccine signups for the 65-plus age group, it appears that the majority have had the opportunity to sign up for vaccines and/or receive them? Is that accurate?
Yeah, just based upon how quickly the scheduler is filling up and checking with other agencies that have been assisting us in vaccines, the list that they were going off of, they have got all of the people on that list. So we will still have that available for those groups, but since it's slowed down, we're going to go on and offer it to the other people in the state too, yes.
Okay. I just want to clarify those points before I continue, because I don't want to get them wrong or misrepresent what you said. Next, I'd like to address the language and the purpose of the health order. The health ordinance was intended to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. The language doesn't say obliterate COVID-19. It doesn't say to make the virus extinct in the population. We know this virus is here to stay for the long term, but now we have it more than well-controlled. My question is, and it's a genuine question, I'm not being belligerent or disrespectful, is how much lower do we have to go in our positivity cases and our case rates before we rescind the entire order? Back in January, I asked that the benchmark, what the benchmark would be to return to a quote-unquote "normal," and Mr. Holtren at the time had floated the idea, and I realize he floated it casually, was that a 5% positivity rate could be considered? We sit now at 1.9% positivity in the last five days, and before that, we've been below 5% for, I think, over a week or 10 days. Our, we're at two cases per day over the last three weeks. It drops to less than a case a day per the last two weeks. And that's information pulled directly from the Dickinson County Health Department information. Coupled with knowing that per Mr. Holtren, that our most vulnerable age group, 65+, has had both the opportunity to sign up and receive their vaccines, we've now protected the most vulnerable, which is amazing, and I totally appreciate your guys' efforts. Additionally, our hospitals are no longer overwhelmed. The Kansas Hospital Association has stopped reporting on regional reports regarding COVID-19 since February 16th, that's over two weeks ago, due to the COVID numbers coming down and hospital capacity improving. That's a direct quote from them. Right now, this, this feels like a situation where we're wearing our seatbelt in a parked car. The engine's running, but we're, we're parked. We're just keeping that seatbelt on because it feels safe. It would keep us safe if there was an emergency, but there's not. We're parked. We're solid. We're stable. Based on the low case numbers, the low positivity rate, hospitals stabilizing, and the vaccinations being both available and administered to the most vulnerable age group, how can you justify keeping this health order in place for an additional month? Have you set the impossible goal of zero new cases or zero possibility positivity? Does someone think that's possible? What is the justification for not just rescinding it? I really, those are, those are genuine questions that I, I would like to be able to discuss with the people in our community and explain to them what your guys' thought process is. I appreciate your input. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Lori. And I can't really give you an answer to that right now, but, but I know it is something we continue to monitor, and a lot of our emphasis has been on the modified quarantine. I have read, like in the Slina Journal, for example, I think they had 16 new cases over there and one hospitalization. So I mean, it's an encouraging trend. And realistically, I mean, I don't think it's something where it has to go to zero. But we do, we do have it set to, the health order has, has a date, you know, currently for expiration. But, but it's, it's not into, it wouldn't be into effect yet, and April 1st is what's on our, what we're looking at. I don't, any of the other, Ron or Craig want to comment or Brad or John? If there's anything additional you'd want to mention?
The only thing I would add would be that, like we talked about last week, that, that 1% can be a little bit misleading from the standpoint, we're not doing as many tests as what we have done in the past. So it's hard to, hard to gauge that, although that's because we're not having the, the people come in that are having symptoms either. So that's very positive, so. You know, 1%, sounds great, and it is great, but that's 1% of the tests that are being tested. So when you only test people a week or a day, that could be a little bit, a little bit misleading. So have to look at the whole picture, so.
I think you bring up good points, Lori, and it is something we'll weigh and take into consideration. And, and then also, you know, John Holtren is here today along with Brad to, to hear your comments. And I know they'll be looking at the information as, as things, you know, continue to take place here in the next week or two. Okay, I don't believe we have any other public comments. And I think one thing that is helpful on this type of setup, we do have, it's convenient for a lot of people to listen in at the, on the meeting, so good to have all of you here. We'll go ahead and move on to county reports from our officers. And so our county administrator, Brad, if you would go ahead and give us your report at this time.
Okay, we did unleaded fuel purchase this week, or last week, actually, and the, it looks as though from the price of the pumps this week, it was just in time. Robson got the low bid for unleaded at $2.15 a gallon. The next closest was Sat Brothers at $2.19. So as you can see at the pumps outside, the, the price is inclining tremendously, so. Just a brief jail update from Monday's status meeting. Things continue to progress well. It's looking like the 15th of this month, we'll be moving the sheriff's department into their new administrative offices, and we're still looking at May 1st for the, the jail to be open. We did lose some of our Masons when the weather got good again back to Manhattan's project, but we, we've got them working on both sides. They, with any luck, by the end of this week, the end of tomorrow, or maybe a day or so next week, they should have the majority of the medical suite done where they can quit utilizing the entrance in and out to the south of the jail. And at that point, why, the contractors can get the ceramic tile installed in the entryway and, and the front storefront, install the doors and everything, get that secured, so. The carpet is all laid in the administrative portion. They're, get, all the ceiling tiles are getting put in. They're doing some electronic access control and finishing up on some of those, those items. So HVAC is being finished up, and so it's moving along as it should. Flipping over to the courthouse side, everything's being torn to heck, and that's kind of part of the demolition. But we've got all kinds of noises going on, both above and below us. The upstairs floor, they finished much of the demolition on the west end earlier this week, and the framers were in, which is a different contractor, started framing some of the new walls over in that area. We also have remediation people and the demo people in the basement down there working as well. So we are scheduled next Tuesday to move dispatch into the old garage area temporarily so that the lower floor can be completely vacated, and they can continue that demo work. All in all, everything's going pretty good. A lot of noise going on, so. Year-to-date budget reports you've got in your packet from Janelle. Nothing alarming there. Sales tax is held steady. The December sales tax committed $102,605. So that's just about $2,000 higher than it was last month. And all budget stuff looks fine. Year-to-date staffing reports, we had a couple terminations in, in last month and a couple of virus, so nothing out of the ordinary there. As John reported, all, as of today, all the school districts staff that request vaccinations will have them. We're done vaccinating in the school districts. That's a big plus as we, he had issued the updated quarantine order for schools yesterday and got that out to them. Having them all vaccinated, or the majority of them vaccinated, is a big plus with that order, which is also a big plus, having that completed when we, as we, as we move into modifying the emergency health order that will be done today, as well as looking at the masking portion of that going into the future. So the more people we can corne, sorry, the more people we can vaccinate, I get all my terms confused, the more people we can vaccinate certainly will help us in considering that masking mandate as we move forward, because obviously, if everybody's vaccinated, we don't have a problem. So unfortunately, we're seeing only about 50% of the people across the board. And it's kind of interesting, we're, we're hearing that from other counties, 50% of the community that wants a vaccine. That's kind of what we saw in the school districts too, about 50% of the staff that were interested in taking the vaccine. So obviously, we know that there's a large percentage that have, or number, or certain percentage that have, have had, had the virus and built up their own immunities to it. There's a certain percentage that had it and didn't know it and built up their immunities to it. There's, I'm sure, a substantial percentage that are getting their vaccines outside of our health department's system in other counties and from other vendors. That's all great. The more times we can get started, and the more people we can get it into, the better off we are. So as we approach that herd immunity milestone, so. And it appears that we're rapidly approaching that, so. Sheriff's vehicles, you had authorized the purchase of three new Tahos for the sheriff's department. They placed that order and immediately found out that the Tahos are no longer available, that they can't even get them where they thought they had them from. However, the vendor can provide them with Dodge Durango police package vehicles. So that's what they converted over to. The Tahos won't be available till later this year, and they, they don't have the, they don't have the luxury of waiting that long, so they're going to go ahead and accept the three Dodge Durangos. They will come at about a $5,000 per vehicle, I believe, less cost than what the Tahos would have been. That's good news. I don't think there's anybody that's used either vehicle real, that is of the opinion that the Durangos are quite the vehicle that the Tahos are. Tahos, I think, are better. But it is what it is, and next year, they'll look at getting an order in early enough to hopefully get their vehicles purchased during the availability period, so. We talked about a letter that, that I had written to the kids as a general regarding the incident management teams. You have a copy of that, and I won't belabor that anymore, but it certainly, it just basically involves changes to the team that, that we feel could be tremendously, come up with a tremendously negative impact on local agencies that are involved in, in utilizing the IMT teams, so. And then I just wanted to make everybody aware that next week, for the people that are online, we have, we have an upgrade to the go-to meeting software that we utilize, that we did not put in place this week, but we will update it after the meeting today. And so those people that want to visit virtually or essentially, there'll be a different link. We'll get it on our website today. Barb will send it out to those people that have requested notification. It'll work about the same, however, my understanding is it will require those people that want to visit online to register an email address the first time they visit, so that, and then it will make notifications to them as far as meetings and the link and stuff. So it provides some different functions that we don't have now. And I think that not only during this meeting, but we utilize this service for a lot of meetings nowadays. I think, I think the business world has changed tremendously as we know it because of COVID, and so there's, there's been a number of changes in the software, and we need to upgrade that. So before next week, if you want to monitor this meeting or be a part of it virtually, you'll need to go to the website after this afternoon and, and download that, that software and make a change to the new link. So we didn't do it today because we didn't want to do it at the last minute and have people confused, not be able to be on the meeting, so.
I think that's all I've got. Okay, thank you. Doug?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Notices and communications, we did have a few things here. We have a magazine from Ingram's, which is a Kansas City business magazine, and then also from Solid Waste Grant had sent us something. Also, I've received a few calls, and I think some of the others have, and mostly they're in regards to the health order that we have. Kind of a common theme is people are pleased that the numbers are on the decline. And, and so I've got a couple here where they are asking us to remove the health order completely for the wearing of the mask. And then also, I have a couple, or one comment here where they are also suggesting that, that it's still a pan epidemic and that we, you know, need to consider that the, wearing the mask is important, and, and so they would like to see it continued. We've had some really nice weather here in the last week or so, and I think that's kind of lifted the spirits of a lot of people, and also... I know, I'll mention too, Kathy Hagman's here, and she's been, she's the new editor, and so congratulations for that, for the Abilene Reflector Chronicle. And there was a nice article in the newspaper yesterday in regards to one of our local businesses here and how they feel a lot of people have worked with them and pulled with them, and they have a lot of community support, but the importance of supporting retail establishments here in Dickinson County. And so anyway, it's just kind of a nice positive upbeat article, and, and it's good to see some of that good news out there. Were there any other notices and communications anyone would want to bring up? I should have mentioned earlier, Chansey Smith was in earlier and gave us an update as far as emergency services and some of the things going on in that regard. We do not have any resolutions to consider or unfinished business, so we'll go on to other business on the agenda. The first one we have is to adopt the Abilene City Neighborhood Revitalization Plan for 2021, 2026. Of course, that is something that involves a cooperative effort between the, the county and the city and the school board on that. Do you want to give some additional information on that, Brad, or?
Well, it's just a standard agreement that we've been involved in with the City of Abilene. We have them with most of the communities in the county, and it's ready, or it's due to be updated. We do have Terry Zook online here, I see, that is the planning director for the City of Abilene, and she wants to make any comments or anything, so.
And this is an inter-local agreement. It gives opportunity to work together, but also, just as it says, the terminology of the heading, it's a revitalization, so it's making improvements and giving some incentives. And on that, there are some tax incentives on, that are involved in that. And so it does get the signature, and already has the signature and approval from the City of Abilene, and then it would be up to the Board of County Commissioners to agree with this. And then from here, it would go to the Board of Education to call Becker, representing the Board of Education. Are there any questions any of the commission has on that, or?
Now, is it my understanding that this is for the complete Dickinson County, all cities?
This is just for the City of Abilene.
Just for the City of Abilene, okay.
Yes. And the way the neighborhood revitalization program works is a, a person can apply, if they live within the designated area in the NRP agreement, they can apply for consideration on an addition to an existing property. And so if, if a person owns a $100,000 house, and they want to put a $50,000 addition on that house, they can apply for that. If they're granted that by the city, then the $50,000 addition is the only thing that's, is given the exemption for that time period. So it's not the whole, the whole property, so.
Okay.
And then once that exemption expires, then the whole property is, is subject to property taxes.
The exemption is on a roll in 10 years usually, right?
In Abilene, it increments at 10% a year, yes. Some of the cities do it a little bit different. Our county one is 100% for five years and then 20% for the remaining five years, so.
Okay, is there a motion to enter that agreement?
Some move. I'll check in it.
We have the motion and the second, that Dixon County goes in on support and approves this for the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan for the inter-local agreement. And it has, I'm to sign on behalf of the commission. Any other discussion or question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That is approved. The next item we have is to consider amendments to the current health order. And so Brad or John, would you want to offer some summary remarks of what this health, new health order involves?
I'll just start out, and then I'll defer to John as, through a meeting with, through our meetings and through consulting with John and looking at the current condition of things, and all of the above stuff we've talked about, I believe John felt comfortable that it was time that we could lessen that, the burden on that, on that health order. So he has some changes to that today, so.
Brad is correct. It's, as we watch the, our percent positive decrease and the number of cases decrease in our county and, and across the state and across the United States as well, that's good news, it's welcome news, and I can, I can guarantee everyone that there's no one within the health department, myself included, that doesn't want to get past this as soon as possible. But we've got to do so as we move forward in a cautious manner and a slow manner. But with the number of cases decreasing, I think that is some, it is time to allow some a review of the current health order that's in place and say, hey, where could we ease some of this now? Are we feel comfortable easing some of this from the restrictions that we had in place? And looking at it, primarily, we're talking about Section 2, which is the public gathering. And looking at it, primarily, we're talking about section two, which is the public gatherings. And eliminating all of section two, what that does is takes off the maximum capacity that was in there, percentages for gatherings or retail that took those percentages off of maximum, maximum occupancy that could be in there, that is gone. It also allows for the opening or possible opening for fairs or festivals. We're getting that time where we're getting springtime and summertime. We start thinking about those sorts of activities and allowing those to happen. Obviously, in doing so, you know, this is a, this is granting them the ability to plan for those. And some of them are far down the road. When we get into the county fair here, we're looking at August, things can certainly change in that, in that amount of time between now and August. However, this does allow them, by eliminating this, to start planning and looking forward to that and, and start making arrangements for that. And hopefully, hopefully, those events can happen without any, any problem as long as our case rates stay down. So that is a recommendation at this point is to eliminate section two of the current health order. With that, still leave the mask mandate in place. We would have this, order would extend through the first of May. But just like now, we're, we're entertaining this change a couple of weeks earlier than, than the original order expired. And we're going to continue to monitor that on a week-by-week basis. And I think that for the health and the protection of the public, I think it makes sense to walk into this, not run into this as we release some of these restrictions. So I'm with everyone else. I want to get rid of the masks just as soon as we can. But I think we need to do so safely and make sure that it's the right time, make sure that our percent positivity does stay down. It's been declining down, and it's, it's, it's down to now where, you know, we think it, that some of those changes can be made, but we need to make sure that that's prolonged. We continue to check with the counties around us and know what they're doing and, and across the state. And I continue to talk with those. We know that our people work and travel outside of our county to some of these other counties and, and watch them and make sure that their percentages are down as well. That someone's not, you know, another local county or close county is high and that the people could bring the infection back into us. So that all goes into, to what we use to review when we make any changes to this order. And we will continue to do that on a daily basis and a weekly basis. And even though it, this new order was set to expire the first of April, if we seen that, make adjustments, we could do, bring that up quicker than that. So it's my recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? Is there a motion to approve this new emergency order to replace the previous one?
I'll make a motion to that.
Okay, we have the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second, that we adopt this new emergency order. And it's D K zero three zero four two one. It would be adopted now on this date. Any other discussion? I will mention, I do appreciate the comment and work that John Holgren has done on this. And I know it involved visiting with some of the school superintendents and school nurses and a lot of thoughts on this. And there were a lot of modified quarantines out there. And, and also his comments earlier that while this goes to the first day of April, 2021, if the numbers continue to trend down, we could consider moving that date in, in a few weeks or a week or so, if we have that recommendation. Any other comment? So anyway, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item we have is a conditional use permit, and this is for two internet towers. And Tim, you're here on this, I believe, Tim Hamilton?
Yes.
So if you'd give a little bit of background information on that, please.
This is, I've included some staff reports for consideration of a, two conditional use permits, requesting the installation of two one hundred and twenty foot telecommunications towers at separate locations and requested by A M G Technology Investment Group, L L C, which is doing businesses next week. These facilities are part of a regional expansion to provide improved internet capabilities for area school districts. One tower to be located at fourteen seventy-nine Camp Road. It is on a parcel which is adjacent to land, which is currently being used as a private airstrip. And some of the area residents were concerned over a possible strike hazard. However, after careful evaluation, it was determined by the owner of the airstrip that the tower location would be sufficiently distant as to not pose a strike hazard. On February eighteenth, the planning commission considered the two cases with the following conditions. And so we'll consider each of these individually. P C twenty-one dash two, location at two twenty-two, twenty-eight hundred Avenue. The commission has recommended, recommends approval with the condition that F C C approvals and certifications be submitted prior to a building permit being issued, which I believe they have already submitted those, that documentation to me. The county commission options for this location, opposed telecommunications tower with the above referenced conditions or approved with additional conditions as deemed necessary. I'll entertain any questions you might have about this location.
The only one was seven oh, or whatever the, the brand before the commission?
Right. It was all, yeah, majority.
So that was P C dash twenty-one dash two?
Yes, sir.
And that's one of the two towers?
Yes. Location two twenty-two, twenty-eight hundred Avenue.
Okay. Let's go ahead and just consider that particular one, and that way we have them in separate motions in case there's any issue on the other. Is there a motion to adopt the P C dash twenty-one two at twenty-eight hundred Avenue based, subject to the conditions funding commission gave to them?
I'll make that motion.
Aye.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Tim, and what is the next one?
P C twenty-one dash three. This is the location, fourteen seventy-nine Camp Road. The commission recommends approval with the condition that F C C approvals and certification be submitted prior to building permit being issued. The options that you have here are approved the telecommunications tower with the above referenced condition or approved with any additional conditions as deemed necessary. This could include installation of safety lining if it is deemed necessary for safety. But the planning commission said.
That'd be part of the F C C giving that recommendation? Who determines that if that's?
Well, it's in this particular case because it's private airstrip. They're not licensed with the, the F C C, but the F C, because, so it, so it doesn't show up for whenever they do their review for tower sites. So we were going off of what the, what the manager, the owner of that particular airstrip had relayed to us that it was not going to pose any kind of hazard for him because it's going to be sufficiently far enough away. It's going to be over two hundred feet away from, from where he's anywhere near, so.
Any questions or comments from the commission? Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second, and this is on P C dash twenty-one dash three. This is located a tower at fourteen seventy-nine Camp Road. And this would be subject to following the conditions given by the planning commissions on F C C proper certification. Any other discussion?
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. The next item we have is, was added on to the agenda, and that is a twenty-twenty-one Chevy van. And they have one located at Home Automotive and for transportation of prisoners. That is, that's the summary. You have additional information you'd want to give on that?
It is. It's, it's a vehicle purchase that we have had in our capital plan for a couple of years. They currently have two vans. The sheriff believes he can get by with one. So the, the two that we have will be, they're going to be cycled out anyhow mileage wise. They're going to put them, it will declare them surplus and put them on purple waiver in the near future. So we'll be going with two vans down to one. So it's time to, time to replace that particular vehicle. They once, and they had the, the people on hand, Holmes has been very good about finding one for them that will fit the need. And once this purchased, they'll send it off and have the equipment put in it, the transport detention equipment put in. And then it'll be ready to put in service. Thanks from Holmes, it was twenty-seven, four ninety-five.
Okay.
I believe purchased the van from Home Automotive, as you recommend by administrator.
I'll second that. We have the motion and the second for approval of the van being purchased from Home Automotive. It's a twenty-twenty-one Chevy van. The price given in the report is twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there anything else to bring before the commission? And entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All second it. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.